Good morning. It is nine o'clock, February 5th. We're here for our regular scheduled Commissioner meeting. We have Commissioner Mullen present, myself, and Commissioner Baumann is on the, is on the phone. So at this time, I'll call the meeting to order and ask everybody to please rise and join in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible.
So the first item on the agenda is the adoption of the current agenda.
Move to approve the current agenda.
Second.
There's a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, approval of the minutes from January 29th. Is there any revisions, corrections, or additions?
No.
I'm good with them.
Okay.
Okay, moves us down to public comment. Is there anybody in the room for public comment?
We have two warrant registers this morning.
Oh, excuse me. Yes, we've got to pay the bills. All right, jumping way ahead here. Thank you, Commissioner Mullen.
Move for approval of fund expenditures in a total amount of $1,101,059.18 as presented and note that it has been reviewed and signed by two representatives of the Auditor's Office and the County Administrator.
Second.
There been a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Fund expenditures. Move for approval of fund expenditures in a total amount of $583,067.33 as presented and note that it has been reviewed and signed by two representatives of the Auditor's Office and the County Administrator.
Second.
There's been a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 I need to restate the salary clearing payroll. Move for approval of salary clearing payroll and emergency management payroll in the amount of $1,101,059.18 as presented and note that it has been reviewed and signed by two representatives of the Auditor's Office. This is a correction from the first one.
There been a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Takes us down to public comment. Anybody in the room for public comment? Anybody on the phone? Nobody on the phone. I don't see nobody coming forward. Move down to approval of consent agenda. We have five items on the consent agenda today.
Move for approval of consent agenda items one through five.
Second.
There been a motion in a second for the five items on the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
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 Takes us down to regular business. Resolution 2025-060, contract with Rio Foltz, PLLC for professional services. Jeff Briggs.
And good morning, Board. As you know, the prosecuting attorney's office is currently experiencing critical staffing shortages. So part of our strategy to address that is to bring on Rio Foltz. They have been prosecutors for decades, so they're very experienced in this area. We'd be bringing them into District Court as special deputies to sort of assist our office in, on that pre-trial docket, and they would handle trials. There would still be some District Court matters that we would handle my office directly, first appearances throughout the week, as well as, we're considering actually not doing infractions any longer, but for right now, my office is currently handling infractions. If, if we didn't assist on infractions, it would just go like, like in Benton County where it just goes before the judge. But so this contract, though, has nothing to do with any of that. It's just related to pre-trials and trials, and so they would assist in that. The rate is $10,000 a month, so $120,000 a year. They would operate as an independent contractor as, as a special deputy. So they wouldn't be a county employee, but they, but they would be operating, you know, with the, with the permission of my office to operate as a special deputy.
All right, is there any questions?
Mr. Chairman, this is Stephen.
Yes, go ahead, Stephen. Mr. Baumann.
I would like to see this moved to next, next week, please.
Okay, Mr. Sant.
Yeah, I'd just like to ask if there's a reason for that. This is something that's really critical as we've actually begun having services start this morning. We just do not have the bandwidth to do this without the assistance of this, this firm. They have been providing prosecution services for City of Pasco, West Richland, Richland, and at, for a period of time when Kennewick was short, they were doing services for Kennewick. We were trying to get them on board, but they didn't have bandwidth until that contract ran out, which was last month. So I, I would just ask if we could, Commissioner Baumann, if you have a specific question or anything, is there something appropriate I could answer in, in public, or is there something more to it?
So two things. Number one is, things being brought before us that have to be passed on that day, I think is inappropriate. And so, and being out of town, I have not had a sufficient time to review this. And so if we take action today, my vote will be no, and my preference would be to move it to next week so that I have enough time to properly review for myself.
Well, that's fair enough. Jeff, when did this get submitted?
I'm not sure the exact date that it was submitted. Friday? Okay, yeah.
Okay.
Well, I, I have a couple of questions. I've read through the contract, and in the contract, we can terminate 10 days. All we have to do is give 10 days notice, and we can terminate, terminate the contract, correct?
Um, that's after the initial six-month period. I think-
That's after the six-month period?
Prior to that, let me see. It might be two months.
And the reason for that is that this is a requirement for their firm. They've had to adjust their schedule to accommodate being able to plug us in for the Wednesdays and Thursdays that are necessary. So it makes sense that they would have that initial period because obviously they've had to allocate resources to be able to do that for us, but-
Yeah, the initial period is 30 days termination.
Thirty days termination?
Mm-hmm.
And then another question on the commercial general liability insurance. It has a, insurance shall be written with limits no less than $1 million. Each occurrence, $2 million general aggregate. What does that mean?
So each occurrence would mean each, each person. So general commercial liability insurance is for slips, trips, and falls primarily. So someone comes in your office and falls over. It's a premises liability insurance essentially. That's actually when, and, and these numbers were presented to us by Rio Foltz. This is kind of a carbon copy with some minor edits of a contract. I believe they're West Richland contract. Not to say that because West Richland did it, it's okay, but the reason why I think the limits are slightly higher for a commercial general liability, quite honestly, is because the risk is greater. There, it's, it's kind of rare to get professional liability claims against a prosecutor because most of what you do, you would be, have immunity, prosecutorial immunity. So I, I'm not saying you couldn't be sued for a professional liability claim, but a lot of those, you're sort of shielded from by, by virtue of, of what you're doing.
And if I'm not mistaken, this is basically the same language that we have for a lot of the independent acts at the Hapo Center that other venues coming in, they have to provide that. In fact, we've had some discussion for there of even raising it a little bit just because those rates have been in place for years. And for some of the events out there, raising that up to, to a higher requirement might be something that we'll have to consider later. But as Jeff said, usually it's the professional liability, private law firms, they also have to retain a professional liability insurance, which is different from this. It's more of like, hey, if someone claims something that, hey, this person, I don't know from the prosecutor's perspective, but usually on the defense side, when you're a private attorney, you would have that, that way. If you had a client that was upset about their representation, they could file that, so.
Okay. Those are the only questions I had. I got to review the contract. Commissioner Mullen?
If it gets postponed a week, how will that affect you?
Well, right now, we basically, he started doing work today under special deputy. I mean, granted, obviously, no payment would go until after the contract. My preference would obviously be to sign it, but I also respect Commissioner Baumann's concern. If he hasn't had an opportunity to review it, I think, I, I don't think that would be as critical because I've, I've had a good enough relationship with Mr. Rio where we understand that, hey, this is going to happen essentially because, I mean, I would have to do this one way or the other. And obviously, our preferred method is having a signed contract. So if we have to delay it a week, I don't think that would be fatal in this particular situation, and I would prefer to have Commissioner Baumann have that opportunity to review it as the rest of the-
So Mr. Johnson would like to speak.
Yeah, I'd just add a couple of quick things. We, we have been in discussion, obviously, with staffing issues with the prosecutor's office going back into December. It's not improving, and we'll talk about that a little later. We are going to workshop with you some, some strategies to, to gain some of the vacancies. I think we are, we will in March be at, I think, five of the nine vacancies on the criminal side. So we, we are, you know, approaching, you know, we're probably past the point of time in a, in a crisis mode of staffing for criminal civil deputy or criminal deputies in the prosecutorial side. So this is a, a short-term fix for one component of that while we try and, and resolve some of the longer-term solutions to improve staffing at the prosecutor's office. We're not alone. I think I've sent you all articles about this. Yakima County was featured in one of the bar association, or I can't remember one of the articles as well, where they're, you know, they're-
I'm jealous of their 16%.
They're 16% vacancy, and you know, that's at the time, we were 42% vacancy. We're over 50% vacancy now. So we definitely have a need to solve both on a short term and a long term, the vacancy issue in the prosecutor's office on the criminal side.
Anyway, thank the Board for taking a look at that, and we could address that next week. And as Eric mentioned, we'll be back for some workshop. I have been tied up. We literally just sent a case to the jury yesterday. That trial started with jury selection January 8th. So that tells you kind of the, the, the challenge we have because when I'm tied up, I can't keep up with the other business. So I thank my deputies, thank my staff because they're able to kind of pull together what they can. But that's kind of the, the bandwidth that is involved. I tried that with one of my other senior deputies, and so that's basically taking our 110% effort nights, weekends, during that time to do it. And that's just, that's what it takes, and that's what my staff is willing to do. So I just, I share that concern that has been brought up with the shortage. I mean, and it isn't unique to our county so much, but we're, I think, a percentage-wise, we are far exceeding. I think Yakima and that article, they were down like three or four positions, but that was out of 37. And I have 9.5 FTE for criminal side. So that's a, it's a significant deal, and we're trying to utilize and tap into our therapeutic court as much as possible, tapping into putting property crimes down into District Court. And that's why this service contract with Rio's firm is helpful because we'll probably be having to put a lot more cases into District Court that would otherwise be prosecuted as a felony because I've shared this with the Board before. We don't operate in a vacuum. I'm very well aware. I've had a good relationship with talking with the Office of Public Defense because I recognize if we all of a sudden charge more cases, that shrinks up our availability of defense attorneys. We want to always make sure we have defense attorneys that can be assigned to the most serious cases in our community. So, so we're looking at that and trying to triage things effectively. We have finally been able to catch up with a lot of the, the backlog that slowed our courts down for a period of time, but trying to catch up with backlog at a time when you're losing the bandwidth of deputies, it makes it extremely difficult. So we're basically dealing with the in-custody cases that come in, and it's causing a delay in filings for the other ones that are screened or, or whatnot, just trying to prioritize our efforts. So anyway, I just wanted to share that with the Board. Thank the Board for looking at that, and we'll be back next week to present that and answer any other questions that come forward. So, thank you.
So we will table this till next week?
That's up to you two.
Is that what you're-
Sounds good to me.
Okay, we'll table this till next week. If they have, just a question, Mr. Johnson. They have funds in their office because of the vacancies, can they use funds to hire this without our consent, or do they need our consent?
They'll need your consent for a contract.
For a contract?
For the contract.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. All right. We'll bring that back to the Board for next week. Next, on the Commissioner/Administrator updates. Mr. Johnson.
Yeah, thank you. I have a number of items for you. On the staffing front, we will be bringing to you next, hopefully next Wednesday, a offer for a contract, a contract for an employee for a planning director position. So we're finalizing some details associated with that. The, you were sent a draft of the County Administrator recruitment, so if you've had a chance to look at that, let me know if you have any comments because our goal is to post that either this afternoon or tomorrow. So, but it's ready to go. We've been looking through that. Our tentative plan is to schedule OPD Director/Manager interviews for next Wednesday. We have two viable candidates, so we'll be interviewing those on Wednesday. We have a new Administrative Assistant in the Commissioner's Office starting on February 18th. So Maria will be joining us, so looking forward to that. Kind of on the project front, for me, things that I'm working on, a lot of elements of Hapo from Commerce Grant for the $3 million, looking at, again, our, trying to finalize our alternatives for the HVAC system from, from, let's see, design, bid, build, to bid, build, to the options that we have available for us, including working, again, with Department of Enterprise Services of the State, doing it autonomously. So we've got some options that we're trying to refine through, but a lot of that is still dependent upon, you know, whether we should do bid, design, bid, build, and whether we have an adequate design already in place potentially, or whether or not we just need to go and proceed with, with some other, other options and alternatives. So still some questions associated with that that we're working through. Looking at the Hapo agreement, we've got a meeting with some of the, with Auditor's Office, the Treasurer's Office, HWL, looking at the agreement, looking at kind of the finance and accounting component of it today, trying to look at some, some, some ways how it's working now and how we might be able to improve that as well. We will be workshopping, I think, on the 26th, Property Management Ordinance for you. So Jeff and I, I think, are in pretty good shape now with, comfortable where it's at, but wanting to workshop that with you before that comes for your final approval. I talked about the PA staff, prosecuting attorney staff, which is another item. We'll be workshopping with you some strategies around looking at some restructuring of their, their current grid associated with positions in that grid, and, and how some strategies to, to kind of make that happen and make that work for your consideration before it comes to you for approval. And then, one item I do need to get back to with you about is, and I don't know, you know, whether, how this will proceed before I depart, but the .09 fund, we really have not, we need to get back and really understand, you know, what's the county's strategy about, you know, getting those funds out in, into the community. So that's still on, I would say, my agenda and list. I've talked to Commissioner Dittier. I'll meet with the Benton County staff today about setting up a bi-county meeting. So it's overdue. I think your goal was quarterly, and I think the last one you had actually was in August, so just before I started. So I'll be working through that. I am working on a response to, to a communication that the Board got from the former management firm at Hapo requesting compensation. And so we'll be, I'll be preparing a response for you associated with some of the earlier discussions we've had on that issue as well. One of the items in a workshop I would like to set up, or maybe at one of the Director's elected officials, is, is a, is for the Board to kind of get a legislative update from what's happening within each of the sectors of your departments and, and the offices. So a number of them are kind of active in their, their realm of what's going on. For example, what's going on in property tax, and the Cessar can brief you on that. You know, Craig could talk about what's going on with county roads or legislation that we think is positive for us, as well as items that we think are like, that is not such a good idea and could be pretty detrimental to us. So it's a little early yet to get too wound up, frankly, so it's something I probably would schedule after one of the first cutoffs as well, and, and potentially also have, we do have a lobbying firm, Water Street Public Affairs, I think, is the group, and they would be able to potentially be there and just give you a brief overview of those types of items. So I know the Sheriff's, I think, is putting age with WASPIC, Washington State Association of Police Chiefs and Sheriffs, and they have a separate Sheriff's Association. Coroner's Association is typically really active legislatively as well. So there's a lot of things in that arena that could be beneficial as well. Also talk, and I'll talk with Benton County today about a behavioral health workshop as well, so bringing them over to not just talk about the Columbia Basin Recovery Cent, Center for Recovery, but also look at some of the other programs and services that we've heard about going on that could potentially be available for that as well. I think those are the big highlights, I think, that I want to talk to you about. I think so.
And one other would be the veterans about maybe putting a workshop together with-
Yeah, I've talked to Kyle, so I will, I'll mention that maybe, there might be a beneficial one in a bi-county environment as well.
That's what I was thinking.
Yep, yep, yep.
All right. Commissioner Baumann, updates?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Had a pretty lengthy update with some people that are experts in the field of emergency radios and the systems involved with those, so appreciate them reaching out and, and helping, helping me learn on that. Had a pretty extensive WASAC update. It was a fast update, but it was a, a pretty extensive, and, and really appreciate WASAC staff working diligently on behalf of, of the counties. And as, as my normal update says, I have had multiple meetings with Hapo Center, and just want to say thank you again to everybody that was involved, and especially to Basin Thaw and Gravel, the Heinem family, for their generosity in providing the gravel to the backside of the Hapo Center, as well as to anchor hauling and feeding trenching for providing the trucking. Had no charge to the, to the county for that, and it just looks really wonderful. I would encourage you to, you two Commissioners, to go look and see what it looks like back there. And, and while we're not, you know, 100% complete, it, it is not recognizable as what it was. And that's my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Mullen?
So this week, had the WASAC meeting. It was discussion on jails and juvenile detention. Just shortages there as far as trying to find workers. There been an increase for mental health and tripled for juveniles between the years of 2010 and 2022. So it just shows that we do need more help with the mental health and addressing that situation. Also attended the radio meeting for further discussion on getting educated on how radio systems work. I just want to mention, too, that House Bill 1399 is, should be of concern to everyone. It's trying to take your right of way to choose your sheriff. This is not good because it would put the, the power into the, the state rather than have local control. So I think that's probably one of the most concerning issues out there right now. And that is it for this week.
Well, I too am very concerned about that House Bill 1399 because it's not only the sheriff that they will appoint from the state, it'll be the PA. So it takes all of that out of our hands as local, electing our officials. Very concerning, as are some other House bills. 1531, which I want to announce that next week will be a night meeting on the 12th. The 12th is a night meeting, and the following meeting, the 19th, will have a presentation again to Franklin County of Washington State to advise against the use of the genetic biologic vaccine platform technology on children and adults. And we may be passing a resolution, but House Bill 1531 is trying to take away our ability to advise- to advise our people of the ill effects of this vaccine. They don't even want us to advise the people of what we are researching and finding out, and this presentation we're going to have is going to be pretty eye-popping for people to watch. House Bill 1504, firearm insurance, every firearm that you own, you're going to have to have a $25,000 insurance policy on it, because if it gets stolen, you're the one responsible for it. We have enough laws on the books, we just got to enforce what we got. And I've had problems with my government phone, and I think we're going to get it remedied now because they are...
Microsoft 365?
Yes, Microsoft 365, where all the Commissioners are having problems getting on the virtual meetings, and I think it's because, once we get that Microsoft 365, everything will be resolved, yes. And then I had a meeting on the radios also, thank, want to thank the two gentlemen, very informational about UHF and VHF and how the frequencies work, it was a very good meeting, have all the information on it, and I appreciate my other Commissioners being willing to open up and listen to everybody and give their, their side of the story, and what has transpired in the past, the history of the radios in the tri-city area, and the UHF was tried earlier and it failed, so we want all the information before we make this commitment of all this money for radios. We want people to come forward and tell us what they know and what they have experienced in the past. And that's the end of my report. Moves down to public comment, anybody in the room for public comment? And nobody on the phone? Okay. And I do believe we have an executive session. Mr. Briggs, you want to call that out, and who you want in the room?
For litigation, yeah.
It would be under RCW 4231101I, potential litigation, me, myself, Mr. Sant, Ms. Lloyd, as well as Mr. Johnson, and obviously the board and the clerk of the board could be present.
And for how long?
15 minutes.
15 minutes? So at this time, we'll recess into executive session at 9:29, and we'll be out at 9:44.
Is that what it's about?
No.
Okay.
You're staying.
Oh, right, the meeting yesterday?
Oh, right, the meeting yesterday?
Yeah.
We've came out of executive session, we're going to recess back in for 10 more minutes,